Regarding the claims, this is kind of a convoluted thing, but when I was signing the checks last time, I noticed that we had a check to Sprinkler Solutions, which is owned by Joe John Drew, a council member. And we failed to note that in there, so I'm gonna try to make a motion to correct that. So I'd like to make a motion that in regards to the claims that we approved at the last meeting, we exclude the one to Sprinkler Solutions in the amount of $70 because we did not pay it.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane, to remove that $70 from the claims that we approved last time. Could we have roll call, please?
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Abstain.
Klein?
Yes. Okay. Then I would like to make a motion to approve the claims as presented. We were furnished with the list that came with our packets. In addition to that, we had the Grover Homes for $575 for the transit office for June office rent, and $70 for the Sprinkler Solutions. I would like to make a motion to approve all those with the exception of the $70 for Sprinkler Solutions.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane for that motion. Could we have roll call, please?
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Now I'd like to make a motion to approve the claim from Sprinkler Solutions in the amount of $70.
I'll second that one, too.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane, to approve the claims for Sprinkler Solutions in the amount of $70. Could we have roll call, please?
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Abstain.
Klein?
Yes. Okay. That was fun. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things, more or less just some housekeeping things. First of all, we want to talk about a little bit about the alleys, just the responsibility of the owners of those alleys. If you have property with alleys, it is their responsibility to make sure that the trees are trimmed so trash trucks can get down through there. It's also their responsibility to keep the trash picked up. Trash is, needs to be done there so that people can safely travel down there, not only for trash removal, but it's also for our EMS people. If they ever have to set up trucks or anything else back behind there, it's important that we can get these alleys through there. I know Jake Stewart and I, we were talking about possibly helping out, and we might be looking at doing something as an overall encompassing what they did similar over there in Gordon. And what they basically did is they went, gave everybody kind of an opportunity to trim their stuff, and then they went through with the city and made sure everything was trimmed back all the way so that trucks weren't getting damaged and the alleys were opened up. So we just wanted to kind of let the citizens know that we need their help in order to help get this taken care of. And then we'll be checking any problem areas and trying to cut back, so that's one of our things. The other thing I wanted to bring up in connection with what Deb was talking about earlier, was pointing out when Governor Pillen was out here along with Director Kramer, it was an excellent opportunity for, not only for us to hear what they had for conversation, but they also brought up a few other things that they were talking about. One was some type of administration's education classes that they're wanting to offer through UNO. And so I have reached out to Director Kramer about finding out how that could be assisting me to make a better job for what I'm doing. And then the other person that I wanted to point out was Jeremy Burrell, who is the director of aeronautics, and he's the one that actually went out to the airport. And I've reached out to him, and we're actually setting up a Zoom meeting with him in June in which I'll have Janet Johnson, Roger Stevens, I've invited Rick Hickstein and Scott Schremer to be all part of that organization because he's fairly new in that position. And so we're doing some networking, so it's one of those things, getting the networking out there is very beneficial for us when we have those opportunities to discuss with these visitors that we do have for our city. So I just wanted to let the council know that it's well worth them coming out here to visit when we were discussing that. And then the last thing I wanted to point out was our treasurer's report. And I wanted to make sure Michelle was here, so I'm not speaking wrong. But the last two months that we had here, our sales taxes are down just a little bit for our community, for our revenues coming in here. Now, is that a big trend or anything to really worry about? No, it's not. But it is something that I wanted to point out, that out of our city revenues, we get about $4.5 million worth of our general funds revenues through our sales taxes. And if that trend continues, depending on how we want to do our budgets and such, it's something just to kind of keep in the back of our minds when we're looking at our next budget year for how we need to address our issues for things. So when you are looking at your treasurer's report, I know Michelle and I have talked about trying to get them maybe a little easier to read and seeing what we can do to assist in them. But we wanted to point out that we are noticing that. And are we in a concerned situation? No, but we don't like the way the trend is going. And so that's one of the things, as we get ready to start looking at our budgets, considering that is a huge revenue for us, we want to make sure that the council was aware of it and we'd be able to answer any questions if you had any other concerns that you might need to address. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out is with our Spark Data electronic version, I know Katie and Donna have been working diligently to get all of this information put on there. But as you guys are looking through that, we've been able to add a few things on your Spark Meetings login spots. And if you haven't had a chance to look at the links for it, we've been able to download the comprehensive plan. We've been able to do, what, seven different studies? I think the housing plan's been on there, the water study was put on there. Gosh, I don't...
The blind studies?
The blind studies. So there's been multiple things on there for your, for your guys' chance to review as you guys are looking through that. If you haven't seen it or haven't had a chance to look through that, I really would highly suggest that you take time to do that as it is something that's very important for you guys when you guys are going through your information, to make sure that you guys are as educated on this as we can be as we go through the whole processes, especially with all the stuff in here. So we got the community housing study, the comprehensive plan, the Shatter in Phase Two downtown plan, the downtown master plan, the stormwater master plan, the trails master plan. That's all underneath of those documents for your guys' review for when you have some leisure to read before you go to bed. But it is a tremendous amount of information that I think is very, very important for you guys to have as you guys are looking through information that might be useful. And if you have any questions, please contact Donna or Katie on that to be able to get into it. You should be able to go underneath your links on it, or no, excuse me, your documents. Go underneath your documents, tap down on that, on your gray bar up above, and then hit your documents again. And then that'll pull up nine different files for you guys. I think it's important, and as we see more things, we'll try to get those on there. We'll be looking at adding our budgets on there so that you guys can have quick reviews and just trying to get you guys more educated on what we have and what's available. Trying to utilize our tools that are in front of us.
Yeah, thanks for the update. This is great. I did not know that was there.
Yeah, it just got done here in the last two weeks, so trying to make sure that everybody is aware. Is there any questions or anything else that I could maybe answer for the council?
Not right now.
No, that's Janet's going to do the aquatic center. Janet, would you like to discuss your aquatic center? Thank you.
So I know in years past, we've usually had the pre-swim day on Memorial Day. Last year we didn't because we didn't have enough lifeguards to actually do it. That seems to be the trend. When all of the college students leave, it takes us a while to ramp up with another, to fill their slot with local kids. This year's the same, same way. So we would like to have our free swim day on the first day of summer, which is June 20th. And in talking with Tom and Donna, I'm thinking maybe that trend's probably going to stay the same. So we're, would like to stay with first day of summer maybe going forward. So if that's okay with the council, we'd like to have our free swim day on June 20th.
I think it's great. I know like for my family, we're typically doing something somewhere out of town for Memorial Day.
And, and that has been kind of the trend also, that there, it isn't a really utilized day. So we're looking at the first day of summer, if that's...
In that regard, we probably need to put that on the agenda for June 3rd?
If, if, if you would like it as an agenda item and we'd get some more, some better press there also, and we will get it on the city's website, that's fine. Thank you.
Do you want to have any other questions? Michelle, I apologize, I should have mentioned this to you, but you have it, is submitted, audited?
I'm sorry?
On your report here?
Yes.
It should say unaudited, I believe.
No, we're audited.
But not the monthly treasurer's report?
Yeah, not through the...
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to correct that. I'd like to introduce resolution number 2024-50 to exclude, excuse council member Miles Bannon for this meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Joe, excuse Miles Bannon. Could we have roll call, please?
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes. Council closing comments, we'll start with Mark.
Well, I guess I'd like to, two weeks ago, I guess today, we had a little incident at my house, and I'd just like to say how much I appreciate all the police officers and sheriff's office and fire department that showed up in such a timely fashion. And I don't remember, it's kind of a blur, I don't remember a lot about it. But they were all very professional, got an ambulance ride, the hospital ER staff and nursing staff was... The hospital ER staff and nursing staff was, uh, spectacular. And, uh, I'd also like to thank, uh, family and friends that, uh, were there for me and helped out, and all the well wishes from the community. Uh, it's great to live in such a small, small town where people look out for each, each other and, and seem to really care. So I just wanted to give a, a thank you to, to everyone.
Um, I guess I don't have a lot to say other than, um, the, I don't know, the keep your yards picked up and mowed and weeds pulled. Um, a lot of the utility trucks, they, uh, they need to get through there, and they're taller than you'd think. Um, as well as I think even the handy, or not handy bus, City Transit even has issues in the main street. So, um, just keep your, keep your stuff picked up.
Yep. Uh, welcome to summer. I hope everybody has an enjoyable and safe summer. I'm glad to see the kids out and about and the teachers with giant smiles on their faces. I want to congratulate our Shatteren High School state golfers, uh, the Shatteren High School track and field folks who are down at the state track meet. And we also had a amazing amount of fine arts events this past weekend with the different dance troops as well as the gymnastics groups showing their stuff for what they've accomplished over the winter. It's, um, it's incredible to see what they can do and the facilities we have and the people who are dedicated into educating our youth into those activities. Uh, can't say how much I enjoyed watching them. So have a wonderful summer and, um, yeah, look both ways before you cross the street or drive across those crosswalks because kids are out.
Uh, just like to mention, everyone have a safe Memorial Day. Uh, this comes on the tail end of Police Week and, um, you know, I remember Tom Cummings, he would always take off for Eastern Nebraska with his backseat, I think, full of flowers, and he'd go to all his relatives in Eastern Nebraska and their graves, and put a lot. And so, you know, make, make, consider making that part of your day other than just being a day off. And as I mentioned before, um, we, the city expanded the time for homeowners to apply for sidewalk replacement assistance. Um, if you have any do that, interested in that, um, your neighbor or whatever, tell them to get going because it's due at the end of May. I think actually the 30th rather than the 31st, if I remember correctly. That's all I have. I make a motion adjourned.
I'll second that.
Yeah. I made the motion in unison.
You can give it to Mark.